Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call our Spokane City Council's study session to order for April 29th. We're going to cover three matters. One, we're going to get our COVID update that we get every week. Then we're going to move into some further education on housing development, focusing on multifamily development. And then we're going to learn more about river cleanup and what's happening out there in real-world conditions. So we'll start with you, Sarah, if you want to give us the latest.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Excellent. Okay, so there was no recovery meeting this week to help determine which to -- I might have said this before, but just in case I didn't, every other week for their recovery meetings that occur on Tuesdays, we are still supposed to get the reports, the hard data, just not, we won't have the meetings, so it won't have any of that soft discussion data. I did not receive those data sheets for this week, however, so I'm going to be missing a few things, mostly just the case counts by race, ethnicity, and age. So for Spokane County, we've had 41,652 COVID cases so far, a total of 1,947 hospitalizations, and a total of 604 deaths. Now, this report goes through April 26th, so anything that has occurred since then will not be included. Our daily case counts for COVID are averaging 106 per day, which is down from last week. It was at 118 last week. Our hospital capacity indicates that we are currently above the goal of 80%, but our COVID-based beds are well below the goal. So doing all right there. Long-term care facilities, we have two new outbreaks in those residential communities. There are 11 ongoing outbreaks right now. So two is new. We've had very few over the last couple of weeks. Our isolation quarantine services are doing well. We have lots of capacity at the My Place Hotel and at the Catholic Charities Immaculate Heart Retreat Center. However, I just found out that we will be, SRHD will be folding down the isolation facility at the Immaculate Heart Retreat due to not needing it any further, but we will maintain the My Place Hotel first-floor capacity. As far as the medical countermeasures that SRHD has been doing, they have administered 22,701 doses of vaccine to high-risk individuals. Last week, 1,500 doses were administered to homebound folks, shelters, and treatment facilities, schools, the Latinx community, and rural communities. This is part of their task forces to try and reach folks who either are unable to come to larger clinics or who work during clinic hours, things like that. Spokane County has 34% of the population that have initiated their vaccines. That means they've gotten one vaccine, one dose of the vaccine. 24% have been fully vaccinated. And that, what that's counting is anyone who received a vaccine within Spokane County at any of the facilities. We don't take residential address or residency into account, so it's possible that that number is a little bit higher due to some Idaho residents and the like, or other county residents, or perhaps a little lower with some Washington residents going to other areas to get, Spokane County residents going somewhere else to get a vaccine. But in general, it's a good guess, good gauge. All of the university campuses have hosted or plan to host a vaccination clinic that's targeted to try and get some of us younger folks vaccinated, reduce those outbreak numbers. And that is all I have for today. Since I only come every two weeks, I will actually be coming next week since I wasn't able to share some of the data this week, so I will see you folks next week.
Could you tell, so if we're at 34%, how does that compare to the rest of the state in terms of first vaccine shots?
You're on mute, but could I ask Sarah a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So Sarah, from City Hall's perspective, I've been asked by our area business partners, do we actually have a return-to-work plan that's ongoing for our employees?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. So we've been working hard with HR to develop a soft reopening plan that was intended for May 1st. However, given the governor's potential announcement on May 5th about moving backwards or staying where we're at, that is on hold. That decision will be made about soft opening afterwards. All the guidelines have been created. There's rules around rotating folks in. We're not bringing everyone back right away. All the safety measures have been called in. All the research was done through WA DOH and LNI. So yes, there is a plan, and we are also exploring telework options for certain divisions. All of that has been coordinated. So we will be reaching out to council right before we decide to open it up, and I can make sure you guys get all those documentation ahead of time for review.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
I had a question. Our first shot rate is 34%. How does that compare to the rest of the state?
It's about the same. Like truly, they're both, I think it ranges from like 31 to 34.
Councilmember Mum.
Hi, Sarah. Thanks for this. Has the city considered doing a big PR push for its staff of 2,000 people or assistance to get that rate up? And we do such a great job of marketing, whether it's the United Way or other things that we support. I'd love to support workers' health this way.
Absolutely. I can certainly coordinate with communications and marketing to do that. That is definitely something I've been pushing. In fact, Councilmember Cathcart forwarded me through Shea, an outreach from a certain company that is used across the United States to collect unused vaccines from other clinics to try and get those used so they're not wasted. So what that means is we now have even more opportunities for vaccine appointments for our staff and for the community. So we'll be putting some messaging out hopefully on that and encouraging folks. And I fully support and agree with you. I would love to do a big push of, let's get you there.
How are we tracking it? How do we come up with that number?
How are we tracking, how is, could you rephrase that?
How are we tracking how our staff members are receiving the vaccine? Is it self-reporting? Is that how that works? Or do we have a portal?
We are not able to collect it unless folks voluntarily give it, and there is no system in place for voluntarily acquiring that information.
Well, that's great. I think what an opportunity for us to create that through our internal messaging that we give. And it just, if you've gotten a vaccination, then let's report it. So we have some idea, and I don't see why we couldn't at least offer that to staff. So they might feel a little more comfortable coming back to work as well.
I agree. I'll talk to HR about that. We have had early discussions about it, but in trying to get everything open and all that, that's kind of been at the bottom of the list. So I agree, let's get that going.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Sarah, I know the private sector is starting to incentivize getting a shot through various means.
Yeah, I was just, I was just reading through that on LNI guidance. If you're able to require or if you can do benefits or perks for that, there's a lot more leeway for private sector than public sector. So I'm still investigating what our opportunities are. I just don't have a hard answer for that right now.
Councilmember Mum.
Sorry to be so vocal about this, Council President, but we are offering to staff, if you saw in the last email, that they would have paid time off, and it would not go against it. So there is a benefit to staff. That could be another thing we could push for PR so people understand that they don't have to do it on their own time.
Absolutely. I've been pushing that. I get a lot of questioned one-off emails from folks, can I still go to the arena? It's not Spokaneian staff. And I always say, you can go, make sure you talk to your supervisor. You don't have to use PTO for either of your doses. Just make sure that you've coordinated. I've been pushing that hard. That was one of the things that we made sure would happen. Thanks for bringing that back up.
You, I think you mentioned, you mentioned hospital beds, but our hospital rate of admission has been going up. Is that?
That is correct. It is above the 80% threshold that we've been looking at, but it changes every week. So we're hoping that by the governor's decision date of May 5th and what he looks at, we're hoping it'll be below that for that consideration.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions for Sarah? All right, thanks, and we'll look forward to seeing you next week. Take care. All right. Melissa, I think you're kicking off this conversation, part of a series, on helping to understand how we actually develop affordable and attainable housing.
Yes, so this is the second presentation in the series. So today's focus will be around multifamily housing. So we have Jonathan Mallahan here from Catholic Charities to talk about the affordable housing side of multifamily development, and then also Bob Cook here to talk about more of the market rate side of affordable, or market rate side of multifamily housing development and MSTE use. We may be talking by the folks from the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, but I don't see them on yet. So I think we'll just get started with Jonathan and Bob, and then hopefully we'll be joined by the Washington State Housing Finance Commission soon.
All right. Welcome, Jonathan and Bob. We'll let you take it away.
Jonathan, do you want to start?
Oh.
We didn't, we're on mute.
You're on mute, Jonathan.
Oh, I say I'm happy, I'm happy to start. So am I able to share my screen? Okay. So first off, good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. It's great to see you all. I'm excited to be here today and share a little information with you about affordable housing. It's a, obviously, it's a complex topic, and I appreciate you taking your time to dive a little deeper into this. We see a huge crisis in affordable housing in our community, and I think that you could say that that can extend to all levels of housing with the increases that we've seen in the market in just a short period of time. So today, what I'd like to do as a way to just spur some conversation, and feel free to jump in and ask questions, is to just walk through an example of a budget for a 72-unit affordable multifamily housing development. This is a generic budget. It doesn't include site-specific costs in this budget, but it will kind of give you a good idea of where we see costs in affordable housing development and what can drive those costs into the process. So with that, let me share this spreadsheet here. All right, are you seeing an Excel spreadsheet that is titled?
We are.
Okay. So when we, when we look at developing a project, we, site control and land is a significant portion of the work there. And this budget here is actually pretty light on the acquisition. So we have here acquisition of a piece of land that could support 72 units at $1.58 million. That's about 8.5% of the total of our project cost. But as you can see, not built into that are financing costs, not built into that are entitlement-related costs for applications for zoning changes. That's a pretty basic cost for buying land that is, has an outright multifamily use on it. And I would just say that one of the levers that the council has that is really helps support housing development is to shorten amount, the amount of time between acquisition of land, site control, and the ability to begin construction on that land for the housing. And I'll show you a little later in this budget where those financing costs and those entitlement-related delays that come in can really drive costs into housing. For this project, before I go into construction costs, it's about 75,936 square feet of residential space with about 4,800 square feet of community space that would be common spaces, offices, things for resident amenities that are available to everyone. The breakdown of units of a project that we're looking at today, 72 units, you can see the average square foot ranges pretty well here, but it includes one, two, and three-bedroom units with a bias towards one- and two-bedroom units. So the actual hard construction costs of a project like this are about 73% of the cost of the budget. There's a lot of pressure right now in the market, especially materials costs, lumber costs in particular, I'm sure you've heard, have been increasing. And those pressures are definitely reflected in the cost of construction. This is based off of costs from earlier in 2020, so I don't want to represent these as costs for today. But you can see about $13 million of costs for direct construction of these units. That is, I should note that this, this construction methodology includes building the units to an evergreen standard for environmental sustainability. So it does have some costs in there that you might not find in all projects, but we opted as a community, I think very wisely, to invest more upfront so that we pay less on the long run and respect our environment and the community that we're part of. Soft costs, when you look at a project like this, are varied. You have a lot of site-specific costs that are necessary to apply for public financing. Those can be market studies, they can be engineering studies, cultural assessments, geotechnical assessments. Going through a NEPA process can drive additional site-specific costs if you need to do additional study on the impact of noise. Or sometimes we do social justice reviews to make sure that we're being thoughtful for how we're impacting marginalized communities. So those are all things that can add additional costs into this bucket. But this is a line that we get a lot of questions about is, well, what are these developer fees and what should they go to pay? The developer fee for this project is about 7.5%. That developer fee generally pays for the time and effort needed to support these projects. For every project that is successful, you might have two more that you've put time, money, and effort into that did not receive funding in that year and may not close down the road. So those developer fees don't just support the existing project. In some cases, they support the overhead for a development organization for those projects that are later in the pipeline. Construction financing is a big chunk of the budget. You can see it's about three, just over 3% of the budget. This is the interest and the cost you pay to get a loan during the period of construction. So you don't have your permanent financing in a project until you close and get your certificate of occupancy. At that point, you have traditional financing come in. For this project, it's based off of a Lytech, 9% Lytech allocation. So you would have very little permanent financing. Generally, that would come from another public source like the Housing Trust Fund. So your financing costs for these projects are going to be less on a permanent basis than they are on a construction basis. You can see here some of those permanent financing costs. They're a relatively small percentage of the overall budget. There are some additional fees that are associated with the Lytech program, and I'll defer to Bob and Lisa if they want to address those. But there are some kind of extraordinary legal costs that you see with the complexity of Lytech deals that you likely would not see in a for-profit or a market-rate housing development. And then this project included some capitalized reserves. And you probably ask them, what are capitalized reserves? These are reserves that you include in your capital budget that are immediately funded at the open of the property. And for affordable housing, it's very common not to just have operating reserves, but to have social service reserves that you're required to build into your financing for your project on day one so that you can show that you can sustainably operate the property for years to come as affordable housing without facing a budget deficit. So in this case, this is about $175,000 of capitalized reserves. In other projects, that one percentage point, that's actually pretty reasonable for a project of this size, you might see 3% of your overall budget being capitalized reserves. And then finally, the other development costs, these are the insurance guarantee fees that are required by financiers to ensure that their investment is protected, and you're going to deliver a product. Marketing and leasing, carrying costs, utilities during construction, and then permit fees and hookups, which are necessary costs for a project as well. Overall, about $18 million, excuse me, $18.6 million for a project of this size, 72 units, with a breakdown of soft costs being about 27% of the project versus the hard cost for Before, I'm happy to go into more detail into those numbers, but I wanted to just give you that broad overview of what a project costs.
And?
Jonathan? Hi. Can you send that to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Jonathan, just on that kind of a project, the developer is going to be a nonprofit that is going to then operate and collect rents on those properties then going forward through the life of the property? Is that essentially the?
Yeah, in many cases, that is the case. So Lytech projects, and I believe 86% of affordable housing in the U.S. is funded through, with low-income housing tax credits. It's not necessary that the developer is also the owner and operator. And the way those projects are actually arranged is you have an equity investor that is, has a 99.9% interest, ownership interest in the property. And that's structured that way so that they can, they can receive the tax benefits of the property. So they get the benefit of the tax credit, in this case, a 9% annualized return on their equity, plus they get the benefit of the depreciation of the asset on their tax return. So I believe the average return for an investor is between 13% and 17% nationally for a tax credit property like this, and it's because of that ownership structure.
Okay. So I'm completely wrong. It's a private entity that is the majority owner, but in terms of the revenues from the rents, where do those go into the financing of it?
Yeah, so for these projects, we would do a minimum 15-year projection of revenues and expenses, and we essentially assume a 5% vacancy loss, which means that you assume that your units are going to be vacant 5% of the time for unit turns and things like that. And you assume an escalation of costs by about 3%, sometimes 4% depending on the market conditions. So we, that revenue goes to pay first for project costs, and then it goes to pay for financing costs, and then it can go to pay for owner costs. But those costs are very much capped. So in many cases, owners are not taking cash distributions from the revenue generated of the property. Those revenues are dedicated to funding the reserves and the operations of the site itself.
But are they essentially paying down the loan? I guess that's my question. Do those rents pay down the loan? So?
Yes, they do. In any deal, you're going to show, if you're going to bring debt into the project, it needs to be real debt, it can be repaid from revenue from the property.
Got it. Thanks.
So Jonathan, you said that the city could help mitigate some of the costs or bring some of those costs down. Where were you speaking that would happen at?
Councilwoman, that's a really good question, and I think it's a big question. From my perspective, the more outright multifamily land that the city has that is near appropriate infrastructure, the easier it is for us to develop multifamily housing and the lower the costs are. When we have to spend two years to go through a zone change or a comp plan update, it excessively drives up our overhead costs for that project, and we actually end up in a position where we self-select out, picking sites that might be great sites for residents, great sites for neighborhoods, but not financially feasible because of the costs related to getting those entitlements and the land use.
Other questions at this point? Not, Councilmember Canir.
So Jonathan, I'm wondering if the hookups and all those fees that you outlined there, if those were waived or if those were subsidized by the city somehow, would that make a significant enough of an impact on the project that it could be a little more feasible? Or if we added further incentives, and what would those look like?
Yeah, good question. I think that those are meaningful pieces of our project budget, and the city has had programs in the past that allow for waivers to certain hookup fees in certain instances. I think a broader waiver of those fees for affordable housing is very helpful in one key way. It shows local leverage. So we would be able to count essentially that value the city is adding to the project when we go to apply for funding. It would help Spokane projects be more competitive because it shows that the local community has some extra skin in the game to be able to leverage other public funders at a state or federal level. So I would, I think that's a great opportunity there. I mean, I would also say ongoing operating costs utilities are not a small portion of affordable housing budgets. I know those utility systems are expensive to run, but they are a big impact on our residents and on our operating budgets for each property.
If you think of other things such as that, could you send them to me?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, Jonathan, could you, do you happen to know, does your, the Catholic Charities kind of pro forma for projects, is it pretty similar to other nonprofit entities? Or is your guys a little, a little bit more of an outlier?
I think we're an outlier in that we have a very efficient, our cost per unit is generally lower. We score very highly when it comes to construction efficiency in our, in our budget. So this budget is based off of Catholic Charities projects, so I would say if anything, our costs are a little lower than you would expect to see on average.
And what would you say is probably the average per unit cost in our market for you guys?
For us, it's about, with construction or with all soft costs in there?
Just everything included, just at the end of the day?
Yeah, I should have been prepared for that question, Councilman. Let me just do a quick calculation.
It was 258,000 with that number that you gave us.
Yeah. 258? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So let's say, are these 20-year, or 25, or 30-year loans on the projects usually?
Yeah, it depends on the funding source. Generally, the loan might be 30 years, but the affordability requirement would be 30 or 35 years. But the affordability requirement might be 40 or 50 years. So the loan term and the encumbrance for affordability generally differ, but we would anticipate a minimum of 30 years of financing.
And then, let's say we're done financing, so the entity that owns it, owns it outright, might be some further obligation to keep the rent slow for a certain amount of time. But after that's all done, then, what tends to happen to these projects? Do they get, are they anticipating they're going to be sold then at market rate, or are they going to be to a nonprofit to run? Or what, what's the long-term ownership of the building once it's all been paid off?
Yeah, that is a great question. It depends on the project and who the project sponsor is. So for Catholic Charities and any nonprofit mission-based organization, you're going to see continued affordability. You do have 4% Lytech projects, which are, which bring in a lower level of total equity to the project, but they are often sponsored by for-profit organizations that may, after a tax credit partnership ends and affordability requirements go away, seek to sell or recapitalize and resyndicate into another tax credit partnership. seek to sell or recapitalize and resyndicate into another tax credit partnership. But for our projects, for a majority of the nine percent projects, at the end of the fifteen-year tax credit partnership, the equity investor will be exited from that partnership. The nonprofit-controlled LLC that owns that asset will, the nonprofit will now have complete control of that asset, and most nonprofits are going to seek to reinvest in the property and maintain its affordability.
If you continue on, I'm not sure whether you're going to keep going or you're going to invite Bob into the conversation, whatever works for you, but it's up to you, Jonathan.
Well, I'm done, and I'm sorry Bob and I didn't coordinate on our presentation here. So I'll turn it over to him. I don't want to take up all of your time.
Okay, great. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you. So Melissa reached out to ask me to speak, who I understand it was basically answered questions that the city council may have, not necessarily put together a presentation, sort of not put together a presentation. I guess as far as market housing, our company, we've built over the last few years eight copper projects, and the issue that we're having now is finding more land for multifamily. It's just, it's not out there. The other thing is to incentivize development, maybe expand the MFT. Right now, I'm looking at a large area ground station, for instance, that is one of the most highly densely populated neighborhoods, but also it has a high density zoning, and the MFT is not in ground station or Peaceville Valley. So it's, I would just ask for the city councils to go ahead and increase the incentives, expanding incentives that are available, and look at changing zoning in properties that are just currently maybe single-family, and think about how that might work to make it more multifamily. I know you're going to get a lot of pushback if you try to rezone something, say around Matrim Park or Comstock, and you're going to capital people with pitchforks coming after the city council. They don't want that in their backyard, but it works in other cities where you have single-family right next to multifamily. And not necessarily, but for people like San Francisco or Houston, Toronto, all these cities have multifamily right next to single-family altogether, and that's what makes neighborhoods.
Bob, one of the things that I know is that we have...
Well, Bob, this is Betsy. So we throw out incentivize. I'm fairly new. Name one incentive that you think would be most impactful, one or two that'd be really most impactful that we should be looking at.
I really think the MFT needs to be expanded, maybe for a longer period of time, utility pickups. So market housing, we're looking at paying roughly fifteen percent of our rents towards property taxes. So basically, two months of rent for each apartment, cancel towards property, and cancel towards property taxes, that's going to bottom line a lot. And it just exceeds, it makes it really tough for a project to pencil out, especially when we're looking at construction costs. We'll be built three years ago at a hundred and twenty dollars a foot, is now costing us two hundred dollars a foot. Lumber, and I'm sure you all heard, is done at nearly three hundred percent the last twelve months. We're seeing so many projects, I've talked to other developers and builders, they have projects all drawn up, ready to go, construction costs so high, they're like, they're thinking about, and they are holding off. New laws, new construction requirements taken, effective January one, energy, energy construction issues, which are pushing the construction cost of a single unit anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars a floor.
Bob, what's your sense? I know there's a lot of, well, I shouldn't say there's a lot, but there are neighborhoods that are zoned multifamily but are not greenfields. There are existing single-family housing there that you would have to accumulate and put together in a project. And I'm just wondering, is there anyone who's building multifamily in Spokane now who are looking at those kinds of models? I've seen it in other, on the West Side where they do that, where they put in either more of pocket developments, putting a few lots together, or apartment buildings. So I'm just wondering, is there anyone doing that now? And if not, what could the city do to make it easier to repurpose existing neighborhoods that are zoned for multifamily but are just not greenfields?
I don't know if there are other people who do that. I do know one developer that we recently sold some land to that is going to be doing a project of multifamily and more like cottage housing. What the city can do, all I can say is just allow denser, allow higher density. We haven't really announced that, there's just not the multifamily land out there. People are having to go out of the city, go out towards Liberty Lake, you know, where there's large slots of land. And there are so many empty lots, you drive all over town, drive all over the areas, which you do have a small portion of the MFT in that area up to, I think it's Hartson. All those areas, you need to expand the MFT, and you need to go ahead and allow higher density, just go ahead and rezone some of these lots.
Councilmember Stratton.
I just have a question, and I don't know if we have an answer for it yet, but would it make sense as we talk about expanding and creating more affordable housing, that we also look at other areas where we can extend the MFT to other neighborhoods? I mean, I would think if, you know, there are some neighborhoods, if I understand this right, that are zoned MFT, and some that aren't. And I guess I'm asking the question, is that something council could look at and start including other neighborhoods that aren't necessarily zoned MFT?
Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I sat on the MFT council committee the last time we went through this. I can't recall, was it you, council president, that was on that as well?
Yep.
I was.
And Councilmember Kinnear. I think we did a couple of them. I think we have a routine review of that. Councilmember Stratton, and I think it could be coming up to review that. We expanded it greatly along Division Street, is my recollection. We actually had a big expansion of MFT last time, and we really tried to do it along transit lines and near areas that had services. So we could find out what the next review is and let everyone know.
Well, and just...
Yeah, I would just think as long as we're talking about this and we're talking about creating more affordable housing, that we probably need to look at, looking at that MFT and adding neighborhoods that could accommodate that.
And the other thing is the legislature just changed all the rules on MFT, so we do need to update it regardless. But Councilmember Kinnear.
So I want to differentiate between MFTs for market rate and MFTs for affordable housing, because I don't want to conflate the two. And I think we should look at, you know, Councilmember Burke's been talking about this for how many years? We should look at, what are we actually incenting? Are we incenting market rate with MFTs? Or are we incenting workforce housing with MFTs? And we're wanting more workforce housing, but yet it's, the requirement is twenty percent when you get an MFT. It's not a big heavy lift. I would also say that when we looked at MFTs the last time and we expanded it, developers didn't take advantage of it. And so I think rather than just go out and expand it, we need to talk to some folks and say, okay, if we expand this, is it going to be used where we're thinking of expanding it? Because right now, they're not using it. As council president just asked, who are these developers that would actually go in where it's already there and the zoning is correct and actually build an apartment building? And so far, there are very few that will. So I think we have to be very intentional about how we move forward with this, and not just create it to create it, but make sure that people are going to use it.
Councilmember Burke, and then Wilkerson.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. I definitely am highly supportive of changing the affordability factor on our MFT. I think that's a good place to start and kind of work our way from there. But I do think expanding MFT is a good idea as well. And just while we're on the topic of zoning and changing zoning plans, I'm a big fan of getting rid of the single-family zoning altogether. This would take decades to make single-family go away. I mean, that's never going to happen, but what it will do is allow places that have empty lots next to them to be able to build duplexes and triplexes and those kind of more dense things. And so you'll start getting a little bit more density in neighborhoods that are single-family without having to rezone each single lot every single year that we do it. And, you know, and I think that this could be a really good move for us as Spokane to move in this direction. Minneapolis has done this, Sacramento has done this, and they've seen really positive outcomes from it, but they still have that single-family community that is still in there. What it does is it just allows lower-income people to be able to live in these neighborhoods and get to enjoy living in a residential area rather than having areas where people are density, you know, driven, where there's apartments over here and single-family over here, and now it's just integrated. And it's kind of a great way to slowly move into that more dense, that dense plan that we want. So I'm just, I'm a big fan of that, and I, you know, I think that, again, it's not going to change overnight. We're like, all these houses are going to be disrupted, and there's tons of apartments up there. It's a really slow-moving thing. What it does is it helps with the equity, because we know that these policies were started as really racist policies to leave people out of single-family areas. Black people couldn't get FHA loans to buy homes, and so single-family was a way to say, we don't want anybody who can't afford it to live here. And so this is just, it'd be a great statement with everything that's been going on in terms of the race, the race conversation. I think it just develops the city in a different way, and it kind of makes it more unique. So, yeah, I'd love to have a discussion about that as well.
Councilmember Wilkerson was next.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Kate. I'm going to jump off on that, but Bob, I also want to ask, we talk a lot about multifamily housing, but people still want single-family housing also. That conversation somehow needs to be reintroduced, because what I'm seeing, or feels like I'm hearing, if you want to own a home, you have to move outside the city of Spokane, because we only have multifamily housing. So that brings me back to the infill of what the city can do to infill these neighborhoods where people can actually own a home. How we build wealth, multifamily is great. We've all started there, most of us have, but too many of us still live there because there is not the pipeline for single-family home ownership. So I just want to ask, where is that going, Bob, that's actually inside the city of Spokane versus outside the city limits of Spokane?
What you would need to do is allow planning of smaller lots. I mean, everybody doesn't need a huge yard for their six kids in cartwheels, and families are less smaller now than when the city was planning. Just so you have an idea how severe our housing shortage is at this very moment, in the entire city of Spokane, available single-family and condominiums that are on the market right now that don't have an offer, the entire city, all price ranges, there are one hundred and thirty-six. So we have one hundred and thirty-six homes for an area, what's our city about, two hundred and twenty-five thousand? That's nothing. It's not uncommon to see twenty, I saw, what am I, you can put it off, a whole year, there were thirty-seven offers on. We need to do something. And I think what we don't stand to do again is smaller lots. You don't have, all the lots don't have to be, you know, six thousand, seventy-two hundred square feet. Homes or lots, there's a lot of lots that were planted around the turn of the century because we didn't have the heavy equipment to build the roads and get the infrastructure in. But as an example, in Peaceville Valley, the whole thing was all planned out as twenty-five foot lots. There's a lot of lots of the shable area that are thirty-five foot lots. Those are just fine.
Councilmember Kinnear, did you have your hand raised before? I couldn't remember or not. But, okay, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just going to add, I love this conversation, and I see a lot of nodding heads, and I'm hoping that we're also housing-positive at our May 12 meeting with the Plan Commission. Really, really important stuff. Bob, if there was one thing we could do right now, what would you, what would be the biggest recommendation from you?
I think Kate is on the same page, I know she is, at getting rid of single-family zone and make residential zone the way of life. We're not talking about getting rid of zoning altogether, where you don't have your commercial or your industrial, but single-family home with a single-family zone or a multifamily is land for housing. So I think that would be the most helpful if we really wanted to increase the city.
Yeah, and I'll just go off of that. You know, if you guys are familiar with that coffee shop in Perry on Eleventh and Pittsburgh, I think, he, it's Rob Brewster, and he owns, there's two parcels on the side of his, like, business, and the city, it's not big enough to build anything on, but he could build townhomes on there. And that would be perfect in that area, because it's right by Perry Street, people want to live there, it'd be cheaper to build a townhome. And so, Betsy, there are ways to build affordable homeownerships into this plan, too. It's just like what Bob was saying, the lots are too big to build anything that is actually allowing density. And so I have this huge house and a huge yard when it could be two or three parcels out that could have, you know, multiple families, and we have a shared backyard or something like that. And so there's so many things we can do here, but I think that that's definitely something that we could look into to see how, like, again, homeownership is important, Betsy, and single-family doesn't mean that you have to have this huge house, it just means that you want to own, right? You want to own a home. So I think we can do it in a unique way if we can kind of work on incentivizing of affordable, you know, townhomes can be a lot more affordable than a house. And when we have lots that are, you know, there's a bunch of empty, and people, what they do, they don't really want to buy them and build a home on them, and maybe Bob can kind of talk about this, because you're not really making a profit on that. And then also, the affordability of the house is shot because you're having to sell it. Right now, you're probably for three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars if it's a new home. So it's not affordable at all. But if we were able to build townhomes or condominiums or fourplexes, things like that that were for sale, it'd be a lot more affordable and more people could get into that market. And so I think it's a really exciting conversation.
Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I know we've gone over time on this, but I want to bring in climate change. The reason Centers and Corridors was put together to encourage density near transit and near services was in part because of climate change. And I understand the housing pressures, I understand what's happening in the community, but I want to pivot back to our guiding document that is to incentivize and create higher density where people don't have to get in their cars and travel great distances across the city to get what they need. And so I hope we don't lose sight of that in the midst of this, quote, crisis coming out of a pandemic where people are... where people are not moving, historic lows for interest rates, a lot of other factors that are impacting our community besides lot size. I did put in the chat, our lot size can go down to 4,350 square feet. RS, four to 10. It's been that way for quite some time. We also increased that to over, I think it's between 12 and 14 in Centers and Corridors. I think one of the things the city can do, and we can save this for another conversation, is how to market what we do have and how to market to developers inside the community and outside the community and promote these Centers and Corridors, which we have laid the groundwork for with infrastructure and with services that could really be helpful and also boost the advent of the Central City Line that's coming, the North-South Corridor, and hopefully the new Division BRT. And I hope we can continue to have conversations around that. I'd rather have focused target growth and impact our incentives there than try to do a peanut butter approach. We've done peanut butter approaches before, and it doesn't work. So I love seeing what has worked, which is the targeted area, and I'm excited to have further conversations about that.
All right. Thank you, Bob, so much for joining us and sharing your perspective. And we're going to keep talking about it. And I'll just throw out there, since we came up with the Centers and Corridors, STA has really gotten more robust. And there are frequent routes that are outside the Centers and Corridors. I live near Grand, and we have 15-minute service. And I always thought Grand must be a corridor because that was my misunderstanding, but it is not. And it's so easy to get downtown, anywhere from 57th Park and Ride all the way through that, that four route all the way to downtown. So I'm hoping we can do more transit-oriented development overlays. I got to sit in on the Central City Line, one from the U District to SCC, and they had a great presentation of basically near high-frequency stop. That's seven and a half minute service. You have a little mixed use right there. So you have eyes on the stop for 18 to 20 hours a day. And then within an eighth of a mile, you have a certain kind of density, and a quarter of a mile. And so I really think that's probably going to be that bridge between the original Centers and Corridors and where we're going. So I'm totally looking forward to that. Councilmember Stratten.
I just want to say, somebody said something that stuck with me. I want to make sure we don't leave out the individuals and families that want something affordable, but they want to live in a traditional neighborhood. They want that neighborhood to feel. Not everybody wants to live across from the bus on Monroe. I mean, a lot of people do, but there are those, those families that, you know, we've seen it here over by the Transitions where we put in the transition cottage houses where those people are fitting into that neighborhood now. They're part of a community. So I just don't want to forget that population and seniors that are looking for affordable housing in terms of cottages and those kinds of things that would rather be in a neighborhood. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that population.
I think we're all agreeing on that. Because the problem is that population can't afford to live in those neighborhoods right now. So we have to figure out how to do that. So, no, totally. Okay, well, this has been great conversation, and it sounds like we have a lot of different perspectives and a lot of pent-up demand to talk about. So we'll continue that going forward. But today, we have switching gears, still about sustainability, but of different kind. And so we're going to talk about the river cleanup. And Kara, I think you've invited some folks to speak with us, so I'll let you kick that off.
Great. Thank you, Council President. Yes, I have invited a couple people here to speak today. The spring, springtime means higher river flows for us here in Spokane, which along with that brings some additional trash and debris in the river. And so I've invited Jerry White, the Spokane River Keeper, to come and talk about the Riverkeeper's efforts in cleaning up the river and their partnership with the city. And so we also have Jason and Louis from Code Enforcement here to talk a little bit more about how those efforts are going. So take it away, Jerry.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Kara. And thank you, councilmembers and Council President. I really appreciate it. I've got a little presentation I'd like to share. I'm going to, I'm going to move it along fairly quickly and try to keep it to 10 minutes. And I think, I think we can get to the heart of the matter in 10. So let me go ahead and share here. All right. Can everyone see this?
We can.
Okay. Excellent. So Spokane Riverkeeper, I hope most of you are familiar with us. I'm Jerry White, Jr., your Spokane Riverkeeper. And we are a nonprofit advocacy organization working here in the Spokane area, but our, actually, our charge is the entire watershed from the Spokane River at Coeur d'Alene all the way down to the interface, the confluence of the Columbia River. And so it's our privilege to protect the river for you. And our mission for the litter program, which is what we're going to talk about a little bit today, is to promote a healthy river and encourage volunteerism, stewardship, and community engagement with our river. Today, what I'd like to, you know, get across and communicate is Spokane Riverkeeper's involvement with the issue of litter and communicate our observations and perspectives, communicate the community needs, and encourage questions and dialogue from and with all of you. So, the litter and garbage in the Spokane River urban corridor, I have a link here that I'm actually, in the spirit of time, not going to share, but we'll, we'll post this on our website that really shows the extent of our programmatic, you know, our program across the river corridor. But what I, I think what I would like you to take away from here in terms of the geographic scope of this issue is that we, we have a really serious, you know, issue with litter from really concerning the city from Upriver Dam all the way down to the, below the downtown area, really where, where we join Riverside State Park. And it is an urban river corridor, and there is pressure on the corridor. So we're going to talk a little bit about that today. So everybody, you know, buckle up because there's, I'm going to show you some, some photos that are not, you know, real pretty, but we'll talk about solutions as well. So the issues, you know, I've bagged into three different kinds of issues. Recreational user impacts that are growing, impacts of poverty, which I was very fascinated to listen to today, your discussion, and then, and then other kinds of user groups that are contributing to the problem. And Kara mentioned, as we see sometimes, you know, we have litter issues down at the, below the high-water mark, and as the river comes up, you see this kind of thing here on the right, which really is water pollution. So the river, you know, the first issue is this recreational users. We have an unprecedented use of the river. I think COVID pandemic was, you know, was really a time when people got out on the river, which is a great thing. People love the river. But it does bring with it a proliferation of litter that's, that's along the banks of the river. And so, and I'll talk a little bit about how we have addressed this in a few minutes. The second kind of use is pretty ugly. You know, we have this urban corridor. We are in the middle of an opioid epidemic, and we do run, I just, this is in the spirit of like, real world, going to show you what we see down here on the river. This, we do see this kind of thing frequently on the river, and in this case, a lot of hypodermic needles. And, and really, this is the impact of a multitude of issues, everything from, you know, poverty to addiction, homelessness, as well as, you know, other issues. And then we have, well, you know what I'm going to do here is pause for the moment. I'm not going to dwell too much on poverty. You all are very aware of this, it sounds like, obviously, and working with this issue every day. What my intention in highlighting this issue is, is to let you know that systemic societal issues like poverty express themselves in our vulnerable landscapes like the river corridor. So, you know, this is a systemic issue. This is not, you know, an issue where certain people are to blame. This is a systemic societal issue. And, you know, I know, having listened for the last hour, you all are wrestling with these issues to try to solve those in a systematic way. And then other users, which are a little more trivial, but sometimes annoying to us here at Riverkeeper, are things like this, where you have people walking their dog and begging their dog, dog poop up and throwing it down. So it might be a matter of talking about garbage cans in more places. But, so, we have sort of four legs of the table, of the program table. We facilitate outreach with partners like Spokane Neighborhood Action Programs. I'll talk about these individually in a moment. We have public and private shoreline cleanups. We provide outreach on our river patrols to river users, where we're encouraging pack it in and pack it out. And we give out garbage bags. And then we do on-the-river cleanups. In the, in the lower right-hand corner here, this is a boat full of trash along the riverbank that we happily coordinated with Code Enforcement on. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in just a moment. So facilitating outreach with partners. We, I want you all to know that we are working with Spokane Neighborhood Action Programs, Frontier Behavioral Health, WSU Street Medicine, Parks, Spokane Code Enforcement, and the Forum, among others. But to us, a very exciting piece of this is this, this program where we're putting folks like SNAP and Frontier on the river to go outreach to the homeless population, offer services to hard-to-reach places where people who find themselves outdoors are finding refuge and trying to feel safe on the riverbanks in a world where there is virtually no safety if you're homeless. So we, this is something we've been doing for several years. And we do a little bit of an outreach message to residents who are homeless with regards to picking up litter. And have found success with that, actually. The public and private shoreline cleanups, I'll move quickly on this one. This is simply, we do conduct cleanups on city properties where we'll announce a cleanup and folks will come out. We provide bags. We provide pickers and gloves. People have a good time on the river. They get to know the river, and they walk away having done something really positive for their community. In many cases, utilities is picking up the tipping fees on this, which is great. And then, of course, we just spoke about our outreach. We're on the river. We are outfit with an on-the-river presence, and we do a lot of on-the-river education with regards to keeping litter off the banks of the river. And this, this is a photo of WSU Street Medicine. So these are residents from the Street Medicine Program that we ferry down the, down the river on our boat, and they do outreach to homeless people and offer medical care when, when and where it's needed. And the on-the-river cleanups, frequently, the way this looks is we'll have residents, you know, along the river, Lower Crossing is a, is a common one. But all up and down the river call us and say, hey, we've got these garbage hotspots. And because of what I think is an emerging wonderful relationship with Code Enforcement now, we will hotspot locations, Code Enforcement will go in, will pick up all of the litter they can access with their crews from a vehicle or a road, and then bag up for us whatever they cannot get. And we'll go in by river and get that with outfitters. In this case, it was Flow Adventures. We have a lot of outfitter partners that work with us. So, some quick numbers. We started in 2016, nearly, you know, around 5,000 pounds annually with, we're, we're already, this is an old statistic. If you go down to 2021, we're already at 10,000 pounds this year. So it really is a problem that continues to grow. A number of our partners, this is just a smattering of them. Again, the exciting partnership with City of Spokane Code Enforcement, as well as Parks. But we work with state parks, as well as, you know, a number of private parties. So, why litter river cleanup? We get high community engagement. The Spokane River directly benefits, and it supports our mission. I think for us, I'm just going to say, and this really rounds it out for me, our community needs from a Riverkeeper's perspective would be a holistic, collaborative approach to the issues. We're certainly collaborating with lots of folks. But I think some sort of centralized, systemic way in which to touch bases and, and really address this issue in a systemic way would, would really be a benefit. With a strong community communications program. And I'm just going to come right out and say it, you know, with, with this crisis we've had in housing, with the crisis we've had at COVID, and frankly, a society that doesn't always provide a social safety network that is adequate, editorial statement on the part of Riverkeeper, not our core mission, but nevertheless, with those issues, oftentimes, we find a population of people vulnerable and tragically outdoors. Many people are one medical, you know, one medical bill away from being outside. And so the communications piece of this is very important. We really feel strongly we want to be a part of the solution at Riverkeeper here, but we are not interested in scapegoating the most vulnerable in our society. And so, you know, we really take great pains to communicate that this is not an issue that we can hang around the neck of one particular group of river users or another. This is simply an issue that's a societal issue, and we need to address it in a humane, holistic way. So here's an intern just this spring. This is actually in the Valley section, a kind of a before and after photo. Let you kind of ruminate on that. And with that, I would just say, if you have questions, I'd, I'd love to entertain any questions or comments.
Councilmember Stratten.
Burke, I want to say thank you for your work. I had the opportunity, two weeks ago, I spent the afternoon down in Lower Crossing with some of the neighbors. And we walked and talked about some of the issues down there. My question is, and I, all of them talk very highly of Riverkeepers and the work that's done to clean up the, the area down there by the river. And there's one area that, I don't know how people did it. It was such a steep slope of trying to, you know, either get things from the, from the beach to the boat or to pull them up to the road. It was crazy. But my question is simple. Do you, does Riverkeepers have a contract with the city or an agreement? Is there any financial, do we pay for any of your services at all?
Right now, we have a grant through the Department of Ecology that pays for litter pickup. Some of our hours, we have, we are getting some money, some small funding for maintenance from SNAP, on the pass-through grant. And the city is picking up tipping fees. But frankly, the large part of our funding comes from other foundations and other funding sources. And we're doing this work because it's a community, the community, like Lower Crossing, reaches out to us frequently and says, help.
Yeah, I don't know what they would do without, without the efforts of Riverkeepers because it was really awful down there. And they called you a lot to come help them clean it up. So I appreciate that. But I didn't know if there was a contract or a agreement between the city where you were paid something for some of that work.
Little bits and pieces. And the only other, you know, piece of matching resources I would call out that's been a great benefit is, is Jason at Code Enforcement. But yeah, we don't have a contract.
Okay.
All right. Kara, do we want to hear anything from Jason and Louis? Or are they?
Yeah, I think, well, I don't know. I won't speak for them, but we did invite them here to, to speak if they have anything that they'd like to share.
I'll, I'll just say briefly, thanks to Jerry for the kind words in the, in the presentation. I think that was- think that was great. It's very similar to what we see daily out there, which we've all talked about in the past, so I won't belabor those points. I just wanted to stress that the partnership is also a huge benefit to us. One of our primary concerns with our staff, when we go to these types of locations and some of these access points, they're very hard to get to. A lot of them are very remote. They require extensive hiking down steep slopes in, you know, through hand-carved paths that aren't really meant to be walked on very often. So, some of these locations are very hard to get to in the first place. And then the prospects of carrying that garbage back up those slopes, it can be very dangerous for the team. So, I just wanted to stress, it's been wonderful for us, too. It's a huge help for our crew to be able to utilize this partnership. I think it's a great resource for safety of city employees and also for the cleanliness of the river. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I have some basic data available if anyone is interested in, you know, complaint comparisons or anything like that, but otherwise, that's all that I have.
Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, incredible amount of work. And sometimes you have to ask yourself, why are we doing this? Why does the garbage keep coming and all of those things? What, if anything, could we do to look further, quote, "up the river" to prevent this sort of thing? To try to reduce the flow of the garbage and the need to clean it up?
Is that one to us or anyone? Yeah. Well, let me start out by saying that we're not alone in Spokane. I deal with other water keepers. The Russian River Keeper has a huge program. This is, this is a national issue. Frankly, it's international. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I think when I sit and talk to our staff, you know, there isn't going to be any easy spigot to turn off, but I think that addressing, I think my message to the council would be twofold. One, everything you can do to address poverty is addressing river issues. It really is. Healthy, happy people who are indoors simply don't, you know, don't produce this kind of garbage that ends up on our riverbanks. And I think that that's a real asset. If you're doing that hard work on solving the systemic poverty, you're doing the work of the river as well. Secondly, I think I would look to you all to be thinking about, can we, can we work through, whether it's the Sustainability Action Subcommittee or another, can we formalize a kind of a relationship that's cooperative, that allows us quick access and real resources, you know, to address this problem? Again, not, it may not be systemic to be out there picking up litter, but to address the back end of the problem and picking it up. I think, so one is a long-term systemic, you know, an answer. And the other one is, can we, can we get more folks out there to outreach to people who are without housing, to outreach to, you know, others who are on the river potentially littering, and then also removing, removing litter. So, not super satisfying answers, but right now, that's, I think, the way I'd respond. I don't know if Jason, you have?
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, when you say more resources, I'm just kind of curious, what type of resources are you talking about? And like, at what sort of level would make a big difference?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, I thought about this, and if there was a go-to person at the city that we could coordinate, now, this is a bit of a brainstorm, but, you know, that we could coordinate through, and any number of us coordinate on a monthly basis and compare notes as to where the problems are, have some, have some teams that go out and address the issues. I think our teams need training. You know, frankly, I'm a little worried about, you know, encountering meth camps. There's some safety issues that are very real when we talk about getting crews out there, and Jason alluded to some of that. So, some of that kind of support, support for maintenance and operations in terms of trailers, trucks, and boats, and, you know, in supporting Code Enforcement and, you know, for other NGOs, just things like garbage bags. So, there's some of those kind of programmatic needs that would be really helpful. And then there's just that holistic coordination of an effort that perhaps the city could play a role in.
When you're visiting these sites, last question, sorry. When you're visiting these sites, do you have anyone with you, like a, you know, from the public safety side, an officer or a behavioral health-type person or anything like that?
So, here's, here's our ground rules. We do not approach sites that are occupied unless we are with WSU Street Medicine, and we stay in the boat. Street Medicine approaches, approaches residents on the riverbank. You know, I should modify that to say, if people come out to say something to us, we will, we will do a little outreach spiel and hand them a bag. But a lot of times, the kind of ground rules are, we won't approach a large occupied, you know, area with folks camping. Let's see. Yeah. And we do not, we have not, we do not go out.
I just wondered if there's more opportunity for connecting up with like Frontier Behavioral Health and having some assistance there, perhaps, if you are going to a place where there is an active camp or?
Yeah. Forgive me, Bob Peeler is with us on the boat quite a bit, if you all know Bob at SNAP. And Bob comes out with us, and I think I had a photo of him, and he approaches camps. Sorry, this is part of the answer. So, Bob Peeler does approach camps and residents, as well as, as well as Frontier Behavioral Health, has been on the boat, offering services.
Councilmember Shretton?
I just wanted to add that when I visited with the neighbors at Lower Crossing, the one, the one issue that they talked about was having garbage cans down there, more garbage cans for people to dump their garbage, the good ones that are walking the trails and all of that. But the other thing is, that's scary to me, is that some of those neighbors that live down there, there's a path that they walk, and they walk their dogs, but some of them are approaching, some of the individuals living down there, making sure they're okay, or trying to pick up around them.
Right.
And that's what was frightening to me, is what's going to happen when that's not taken well by the individual who's living on that beachfront. So, even if the city could provide dumpsters or garbage cans with regular pickups, that was one of the suggestions from the neighbors.
Well, just to springboard on that, well, first of all, my response to that is, you know, we just are in this thorny, difficult conundrum that is, that is basically presented to us by the way we run our society, right? I mean, this is me. I'm not River Keeper, but this is my personal hat on. So, you know, so there's no easy answers. But what I would say is that, you know, to springboard on what are some other things the city could do in terms of coordination, and we've gone all the ways this way with Jason and Code Enforcement, which is provide drop spots. So, even if, you know, we don't necessarily have to boat everything all the way out, but could have certain pickup spots, People's Park or other places where we could drop garbage, and then have city vehicles pick them up. In terms of the interface of communities, you know, that's simply one of those issues that, you know, well, I'm just going to stop talking. I mean, it just is what it is, right? We're, we're in a tough, we're in a tough place right now, where there's a lot of economic stratification and not a lot of social safety nets for folks, and people are desperate.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Jason and Luis, for being here. Thanks, Kara, for organizing this. And I think that brings us to the end of our study session for today. So, we'll adjourn. We'll be back on our schedule. I believe it's Public Safety on Monday, 1:15, and briefing session and our council meeting. So, have a good weekend. Take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned.